Voters say yes to a new government and no to the military.
The sentiment of the era has changed, and it's right.
The prime minister-elect says the Thai people have had enough of military rule, but will the army accept the results? Also, an election in Turkey where a lot of people were hoping for change.
I'd put Sultan and Hukum Dali.
This voter said the reign of the Sultan, a reference to President Recep Tayyip Erdogan, is going to end. It still might, but not before a runoff election two weeks from now. I'm Marko Werman. Also today, Parisians used to be able to swim in the Seine. That ended a century ago because of pollution. Come summer 2024 in the Paris Olympics, though.
It will be a marvelous stage and place and venue.
Cleaning up the Seine and much more today here on The World.
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Jack Spear. Contrary to some predictions, the number of migrants crossing into the U.S. from Mexico is down about 50% since pandemic border restrictions ended last week. But as NPR's Joel Rose reports, immigration authorities say it's too.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of May 15th. And with that, if the clerk could call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
I'm sorry, got me to stay here when you called me. Go ahead. Never mind.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here. I'm anxious to be here. Can you tell?
There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right. For meditations, I see Councilmember Spadafor first.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Wood. Just one I'd like to keep in our thoughts is the family of Dr. Sam Mallory. Sam passed away last night at the age of 91, longtime dentist, Lansing resident. His children are graduates of the school system, and he was the father-in-law of our governor and resident of the city of Lansing. So keep that family in your thoughts this evening.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Councilmember Brown.
I would also like to remember Dr. Sam Mallory. He's a personal friend and mentor of mine. He was one of the most gracious people that I've ever met in Lansing, and I would not be sitting here today without his support, his encouragement, and his inspiration.
Thank you. Are there others? Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. I have two people. First is a young man. I believe he was 30, Teddy Treadwell. He was just a very positive, positive person. Every time I see him, he's saying hi and how's things going and how can he help? He unfortunately passed away of a heart attack on the 9th at a very young age. He also has a young family, and it's sad, but he's just such a positive person from Lansing that I wanted to mention him. So please keep his family in your prayers. Also, a person that most people may know, Dr. Clyde Carnegie, a longtime servant in Lansing. He was a principal at Sexton High School for many decades. He's a pastor at Friendship Baptist Church. He also serves on our very own Lansing Police Department Board of Commissioners for many decades as well. He's always positive. He cares about all the people that he comes in contact with. Some people say he's strict, but those same people also say that it's a good strict and that he cares for people. He dedicated pretty much his whole life towards public service, and he will be missed in this Lansing area, especially the 4th Ward, especially his church, especially Sexton, and especially our Lansing Board of Police Commissioners. So please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. I'd like folks to remember the family, the friends and the neighbors of Mr. Gary Castile, who passed away recently. Gary was a longtime Churchill Downs neighborhood advocate, pugnacious, really in his representation of that area, Neighborhood Watch Coordinator. I met Gary probably, actually, it was in 2015 when I was knocking doors for this position, and he invited me in for a cup of coffee, and I think I emerged three hours later. And if any of you know Gary, that wouldn't surprise you. But over the years, we grew from, you know, representation and constituent to really friends. Just an incredible, incredible man who gave really everything he had to our community. So again, I want to honor first Mr. Gary Castile, but also make sure that we remember his family, friends, and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I too would like to remember Dr. Clyde Carnegie. He was also my principal about 30 years ago, 30-plus years ago. And I like to echo the same sentiments that Councilman Jackson said. I mean, he was a great guy, always there for you. I mean, I may not have been there on the best graces at some times when I met him, but he was always a fair man, a really good dude. You could always see him standing out in his yard, you know, as you're driving down Michigan Avenue. So please keep his family in our prayers, and he was a good, outstanding gentleman for the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If we could please rise. Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are not going to consider the proceedings at this time, so that takes us to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Are there any councilmember comments at this time? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to announce a meeting tomorrow in the West Side neighborhood. This is for a traffic light concern, I guess. The light that's on Saginaw and Jensen went from a regular light to a blinking yellow light, and some of the neighbors have concerns. I believe there's some for it, some against it. But either way, tomorrow, May 16th, at 6:30 at Sexton High School Cafeteria, which is on the west side of the building, in the back, off of Michigan Avenue, go through door number 14. There will be a meeting with the Michigan Department of Transportation, Lansing Police Department, public service people from our city. Some I'll be there, community people will be there, and it's a time to talk about that light and people's concerns. 6:30 Sexton High School Cafeteria tomorrow, May 16th. See you there.
All right. Thank you. As Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. I want to first thank folks that came out to constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. The focus really was economic development. And so we had the LEDC in, the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. We also had a number of property owners and developers on hand that are doing things in southwest Lansing that are, I think, have the potential and power to be catalytic and transformational in their respective areas. And so it was really, really a fantastic meeting, very well attended. I wanted to thank Carl, Chris, and Aurelius. Carl Dorsheimer, Chris Klein, and Aurelius Christian specifically for being there on behalf of the LEDC. They always do a tremendous job. And so they, great presentation, did a great job with the questions. And so again, thanks to those folks. Also want to thank Ryan, Mr. Cost, for being present, County Commissioner Miles Johnson, our Ingham County Treasurer Alan Fox. We had our fire inspector Matthew Mansberger on hand, who talked about the city's fire alarm program. We had Robert Anderson King from the administration, as well as Delisa Fontaine and Luciana Solis. And of course, I want to thank the citizens of the city that prioritized that on a Saturday morning, and it was incredibly nice out, and they could have been doing a number of things, but they were out there prioritizing communities, so we certainly appreciate that. Also want to announce three neighborhood meetings. The third week of each month is incredibly busy in the 3rd Ward. The first meeting is the Churchill Downs Community Association. That meeting will be tomorrow, May 16th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center, 5825 Wise Road. They are going to have their community police officer, Mr. Glenn Briggs, on hand to discuss a number of issues they're concerned about regarding public safety. The neighborhood boundaries are, if you're curious, is Jolly to the south, Wayne Wright to the east, Waverly to the west, and then West Home, sorry, to the north. On Wednesday, the Colonial Village Neighbor Association will take, that meeting will take place, that's May 17th at 7:00 p.m. They meet at Grace Methodist Church at 1900 Boston Boulevard. I'm sorry, not 1900, Mount Hope. Neighborhood boundaries would be Mount Hope to the north, Pleasant Grove to the east, Deerfield to the west, and Victor to the south. And then lastly, Luton Rich Neighbor Association will be meeting Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 p.m. That's at the Mayflower Church, 2901 West Mount Hope. And scheduled to be on hand are representatives from the Lansing Police Department, Lansing City Council. I think in the email, Mr. Jeffrey Brown was referenced specifically, the Ingham County Board of Commissioners in rejuvenating South Lansing. Neighborhood boundaries are Mount Hope to the north, Pleasant Grove to the east, Victor to the south, and Deerfield to the west. Let me go back. Colonial Village boundary, sorry. Colonial Village is actually Mount Hope to the north, South MLK to the east, West Homes to the west, and then Pleasant Grove to the, I'm sorry, Pleasant Grove to the west and West Homes to the south. Thank you.
We've now had our geography lesson, so.
And the reason why I say that is that I cannot tell you how many times I talk to people in neighborhoods and they have no idea that they're part of an association. Yeah.
Okay. Are there, Councilmember Brown?
I cannot compete with all of that. Thank you for the update. But I wanted to congratulate Dr. Thomas TJ Barker for graduating from MSU with his medical doctor this weekend and deciding to work local here at the new McLaren. So just wanted to say congratulations to him and of course, the family. It takes a village.
All right. Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember?
Sorry, I do have one more. At my constituent contact meeting, we talked about, this past Saturday, Saturday, sorry, we talked about the Sycamore Townhomes. Some of you will remember the Townhomes as Arbor Point, others will remember them as Woodside Meadows. They are currently Sycamore Townhomes. Recently, we did get out there and we did pink tag 344 units. And we were talking about that process, and in talking about that process, I did recognize the fact that Jordan Hankwitz, which I was very impressed with, was on site as the Director of Economic Development and Planning, as well as code officers, and they were out there talking to folks in terms of what those pink tags meant and in providing a number of resources. At the meeting, because I know folks wanted to know, I let them know that I was not aware of our housing ombudsman being on site. There were some note takers there that then went back and let that individual know that I said that. So that person reached out to me and assured me that he was on site. I tried to confirm that with a number of people. Mr. Jordan Hankwitz did say he was actually on site, which I appreciate. The other folks I talked to did not see him. So with that being said, I want to apologize to the housing ombudsman because Jordan Hankwitz did confirm that he was on site, although others did not see him. So again, my apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? Seeing none?
We are to, where are we?
Public.
To community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
This Saturday from 10 to 12 at the entrance to Evergreen Cemetery, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, will be holding its 16th annual seedless or seeded geranium giveaway. We will have 125 seed geraniums, and each person that comes and wants them is welcome to take up to four to plant on grave sites in the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen and Mount Hope and North. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? Okay, seeing none. We are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters tonight only includes the city budget. So if you wish to speak before council adopts the budget, please complete a blue form with grace in the back in about the next half a minute. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to remind everybody that this Wednesday is 517 Day. So we'll be doing lunch at Lansing Shuffle, and then there is the Love Lansing Event at the South Washington Office Complex in South Washington, on South Washington, down by the old McLaren site. That should be a lot of fun, so I hope folks will join. We're going to be honoring a lot of different neighborhood associations and others and some folks who've done some great things for our city. Also on Wednesday, a little earlier than that, at 4:00, is the grand opening of Moneyball. So everybody who's a Moneyball fan, the Moneyball Worldwide Headquarters opens on Saginaw, right across from Park Furniture, yeah, right across from the Park Furniture Building. It's the first piece in the revitalization of that corridor. I want to thank Desmond Ferguson for all of the work he's doing, and we're really excited to have Moneyball there. Thursday morning is the Safety Patrol Picnic at Hawk Island, so we get to congratulate all of the young people who were safeties. I'm sure many people here were safeties when they were in school, and now we get to thank those young people. Also, on Thursday afternoon, Lansing won an award, Lansing Childhood Obesity Prevention Environmental Health and Sustainability Program won an award, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, so we'll be celebrating that. I'm excited about that. Saturday, we have a whole variety of things going on. We have our mobile food distribution at Cristo Rey on the south side on Miller Road. We have our lids for kids at Fire Station 8. We have our Employee Day of Service, where our employees get out and do incredible things in our city, so thank you to our city employees. We have, downtown Lansing has a Health and Wellness Fair, and the Lansing Symphony Orchestra has their ball that evening. So lots going on in Lansing. It was mentioned, the Sycamore Townhomes. I did want folks to know that we had actually three departments there. EDNP was there, HRCS was there with our housing ombudsman, and Lansing Police Department had social workers. They were there a good chunk of the day, and they were able to knock about half the doors, and they're continuing to knock those doors now, the ones that were tagged to talk to folks and let them know all their options and what they can do and what pink tags mean. So I'm happy to see our three departments, LPD, EDNP, and so Lansing Police Department, Economic Development and Planning, and the code folks, as well as Human Relations and Community Service, all coordinating together to address these pink tag properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes just one item, that's the city budget. Our first speaker is Jody Washington, followed by Mike Lynn.
Thank you, Jody Washington, East Side Lansing. Well, you pretty much did what I figured you would do, which is, so I'm really glad that I prefaced the Committee of the Whole. It's smoke and mirrors in the budget. There are no real substantial cuts, vacancies that haven't been filled in years, those are not cuts. And that money will come in as a carryforward, so Mayor Schor can get everything he ever wanted in the first place. So like I said, I know how this works. I know the backdoor deals. I'm really concerned, Carol, that you said you and the mayor did this budget, and you heard from nobody else. That doesn't speak well of the other council members, and it certainly isn't how the budget process is supposed to work, that the president of council and the mayor determine what the budget will be. We didn't see any cuts. We saw none. All you're doing is not doing what you weren't going to do anyway. So having said that, I'm sorry. I'm really, really disappointed. But I will say, Brian, thank you so much for putting in an amendment for the four warming centers, and I know Pat had talked about that, too. I'm sorry that it's going to be going through the HRCS department, because we already don't know what happens to the millions of dollars that go through their hands. They're just a pass-through. They don't do the work. They're merely a pass-through to the COC Continuum of Care. We have no idea what they spend that money on. And in fact, we don't know so much, that people I advocate for have gotten letters that Advent House will no longer do case management for them because they have no money. The HARA program was in crisis because, and that's run by Capital Area Housing Project, came to a halt because they had no money. Advent House had to come back and get, what, another $280,000 from this body to run the hotel program because they ran out of money? And you're going to give them almost another million dollars once Andy Schor gives the $800,000 he's pulling out of God only knows where, and this extra money we are giving them for these warming centers. So like I said, don't get in a peeing contest with a skunk. I know how it works. I know what you did, and I'm highly disappointed.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Mike Lynn, I don't think it was as bad as Jody said, but I don't know yet because I haven't seen the budget, right? So I heard of some cuts that were made and so on and so forth, but I don't know because I haven't seen it, actually. So what you guys actually did to the budget, I haven't seen. But outside of that, I do have some concerns about the rollover. And, you know, as long as I've been coming here and watching this budget, I've been seeing all these positions not being filled, right? Fire Department, Police Department, all these, when the police, when we were talking about defunding the police, that was a big conversation. There was like, I don't know, some astronomical amount of positions weren't filled, right? So where's that money at? And the only thing that I can keep thinking is that I wouldn't fill those positions either if I could spend that money without appropriating it. So if that's true, if that's true, and that's what's happening, is that we have all these unfilled positions because at the end of the year, he gets to come back and say, hey, I want to spend this money this way, or whatever the case is, or doesn't have to come back and say anything. We've got to put a strangle on this overspending, like, period. And so I have different agendas to just even that aspect, and I can admit that. A lot of people ask, why I didn't run for council? Why don't you run? Why don't you get up here? You'd be so good at this, you know, you understand it all, and it's because I believe I can be more impactful from out here. And the reason I say that is because as long as we have a mayor in here that is working as hard as he possibly can to defraud this city, somebody out here has to speak that won't get pulled up on ethics complaints, that won't have to, you know, be quiet about certain things you guys hear behind closed doors. So that's why I stay out here and not get up there, because I could have absolutely taken one of those spots. And that's me being humble. I mean, I should be humble. I could have absolutely taken one of those spots, but I think I'd be more influential out here, as long as you all are listening to what the people are saying. So my agenda would be to pretty much put constraints on what that dude is able to do. So I appreciate Ryan for you pulling that money out of there, you know, and the hissy fit that he threw when it was done. It was expected. I was happy to see it because it meant that it meant something. But actually, at the same time, I was thinking, you know, the guy's out of order, and President Wood, that's your job to make sure that when you guys have a motion in play, and I said this to other council people, when you have a motion in order, nobody outside, he has no right to speak no more than I do. So when I was telling you all he was out of order and you told me to stop, he should have been told to stop as well. There's a motion in play. There's only voting, talking about, discussion from voters. So I think that that same behavior is winning the play with your guys' conversation. And when you said that, Carol, it really kind of hurt my feelings, to be honest with you, because I thought we kind of garnered somewhat a relationship, and through the discussions I've had with you, for you to state that you weren't changing your mind because you made a promise to this mayor, you and him in a close conversation, that's disturbing, because I just said last week that I know you all have the citizen's heart in mind, like, that's where your heart is at. And then you told us, like, candidly, like, in front of everybody, I made a deal with him, so I'm not going to do anything, even if you persuade me of it. That was saddening. It was hard to hear, but it was almost like the mask slipped a little bit on some of y'all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Erica Lynn.
I'm pretty sure that I don't need any introduction, but in case those who haven't seen me at meetings before, even though I've been at almost every single meeting out there, I am Nicholas Zandi, and I'm from the 2nd Ward and from the Old Everett Neighborhood. And of course, since the budget is the one thing on the agenda, you know I absolutely have to talk about that. And while I was unable to, I did actually read parts of the budget, and it was really hard for me to do so because you're cited. But also, even then, I am, you all know that I'm just not satisfied with the current way we're using our budget. And how it goes, we're putting it towards things that we just don't need, that don't need extra money, please. And the fact is, when we're spending that money, apparently, we're not even filling positions with that. So why do we need to spend money if we're not going to fill positions? That's a huge problem. And the fact that we're spending money on departments that don't need any excess money, this has a lot of negative effects on other departments as well, one of which I won't discuss here because it's personal. But all I'm going to say is this city spending money on things that really just don't need extra funds has consequences, and we need to be better at utilizing the money we do have on things that will actually help this out of the city, like maybe actually filling in those positions or something. I don't know. And also maybe spending on, let's say, neighborhoods, which are actually pretty underfunded. And because, and the way we're spending money right now just isn't feasible, and I don't think it ever was feasible in the first place. And the way the funds are being used need to be transparent, not just with the constituents of the city of Lansing, but also between branches within our government as well, and not just one particular council member. That's all I really need to say about the issue, and I shall yield the last 40 seconds of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Erica Lynn.
Hello, Erica Lynn. I was able to watch the stream of the Committee of the Whole, so I caught the majority of the conversation and all of the discussions, and I guess, you know, the changed budget that's being proposed. The one thing I just want to acknowledge before I talk about, I guess, the little bit that we do know about the potential cuts that are on the table, because I know that we won't be able to get to know the line items by each one of them tonight, just to acknowledge again, and I know I probably sound like a broken record, but the continued, like relentless passing of a budget that is plunging us into a deficit year over year without us making those substantial changes. And when we say substantial, we don't mean keep it the same status quo. Substantial means it's going to hurt. It's going to suck. It's not going to feel good. Some people are going to be unhappy. But if we don't do that, we're putting ourselves in a dangerous situation. And it's really disappointing to think that we're just going to keep it the same, meaning we won't let you have more, we won't have this bloated budget, but we'll just keep it the same, when we know that the same is also bad, pretty bad, and it has us in such a bad position. And just to again acknowledge that this council's, you know, duty is to protect us. You know, this is one of the primary components. This is one of the, I guess, places of power that you do have, and I think that you all recognize the gravity of the situation. I also just want to get really quickly to, you know, the fact that there was conversation of like a potential 33% decrease cut to like the Parks and Recs budget. That's a sounding. I got to say, I'm not happy about hearing that. I don't think anybody would be. I also think that that is a really manipulative type of conversation to have, 11% here, 11% there, 33% Parks and Recs. But we didn't hear about a cut to the mayor's office budget, and that's the one that we had the discussion on. I think that the response, the disappointment, saying, I'm so disappointed, and we're going to have to have layoffs and all of this and that, I wonder if that was the same conversation when there was a 33% cut to our Parks and Recs budget, who doesn't deserve that? It needs those services. It needs that operating budget, because that says more about your priorities than putting that above the city's priorities. So I was really disappointed to kind of hear that conversation. And then on top of that, the fact that from last year to this year, there was $188,427 increase. increase to your office budget. Don't have that increase then, and we won't be mad this year when we cut some of it. So I was really frustrated at that part. Last but not least, I do want to thank, thank you to Councilmember Cost, to putting all of those changes through. That is listening to the people, that is prioritizing our needs, that is moving us forward. Patricia Spitzley, support on that on the warming center, Brian T. Jackson. Those are the things that we want to see prioritized in our budget. We'll take that discomfort. We'll take that unhappiness if we have to move things around for that, not just to have more people that report directly to a mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are to resolutions for action, item two, the fiscal year 24 budget.
Before I turn this over to Vice President Garza to make a motion, I want to make a few comments. Some of these comments were made during the Committee of the Whole, so they might be repetitive for those that are in the audience or for those that are listening at home. First of all, I'd like to indicate that, as I said before, during this whole process, we have asked a number of tough questions to departments that have come down before us. Those questions that were asked were in an attempt to glean information for us to make the most informed decisions we could as we were putting the budget together. And hopefully, no one that sat at that table took those issues personally. Because, again, it was our responsibility to try to get as much information as we could based on our interaction with departments or what our constituents had felt as they came forward. Second of all, I want to take an opportunity to thank our internal auditor and Sherry Bok, our office manager, who worked diligently on preparing the documents and the things before us. Emily came in on April 1st and started working immediately on the budget. I think one thing that council and the public needs to understand, for some time, we did not have an internal auditor. And so as we are looking at the budget that we have before us, there was not a great deal of opportunity to go back and try to look at things to bring forward in a budget because we did not have the services of an internal auditor. Next is, one of the things that I heard from council members as well as constituents was the need to fill positions. We have 81 positions that are funded through the general fund and approximately 47 positions, non-general fund, that are currently vacant. The goal was to make sure that these positions are filled. People understand that there is a need to have employees out there doing the job that all of us expect to have done. And because of that, the proposal that came forward to you, I want to assure everyone in the public that I talked to every single council member and listened to every single council member's concern and tried to put together a measure that I thought would work, including talking to the administration. Part of leadership, even though at times you don't agree with the administration, is understanding the process and knowing that if we can't come to some collaborative decision, then we have the potential of not having a measure in front of us to be able to vote on, or the fact that we end up with vetoes and other things that could create problems. I listened to what everybody said. And based on that and some of the comments that were made, we had put together a potential of 5% and 10% cuts without changing the vacancy factor. A number of, we have heard from some people that the proposal should have included taking from personnel lines as well. Again, I stress the fact that there was a concern that once we had a position that was vacant and we used those dollars someplace else, the likelihood would be in the future, and I've seen this in previous administrations, to end up reducing the workforce because those positions weren't filled. With that, I tried, in working again with the internal auditor and listening to council members, come up with a process that we felt would be something that we could pass. And yes, I did talk to the mayor about it. That's part of leadership. That's part of trying to come together to come up with a solution. And yes, I gave my word. And everyone up here that I spoke to knows that I had talked to them ahead of time after I had talked to the mayor, and I talked to you individually and explained to you what the process and what was coming forward. So it was not this Carol pulling this magic hat out of her head and trying to push something on you that you didn't agree with. Also, and this is no deference, but I didn't receive, other than some of the budget amendments that we just recently had, any other budget recommendations or changes that someone wanted to see to the budget. This budget did not evenly go across the boards making cuts. I will admit to that. When we first looked at this, we looked at figures that came from the administration that were what they had projected that the FY '23 budget would end up with. When we looked at these, what we did was we took those numbers, we backed out salaries from '23, added in salaries from '24 because we knew that there were wage increases. At the time that we went through this, we were now into Thursday, I believe it was, and putting this together. At that time, we found out from the Finance Department that they had already backed out the vacancy factor out of each department. So you have some departments that have a larger vacancy factor than others, and that's why you'll see larger cuts in some than others. But one of the ways that taking from operating is at the end of the year, every year, this is nothing new. At the end of every year, we take the vacancy factor, and departments that have overspent or departments that are asking for carryforwards, we move money at the end of the year so we can close out the books. So that is not something new either. That is something that we have done. So there is the potential of making adjustments to some departments, such as Parks and Rec, such as the fact that currently in the city attorney's office, he has no operating budget. So there is the opportunity to make some of those changes. Our other option was frankly, to do nothing. I mean, we could have gone forward with what the mayor's proposed budget was before you, and I will tell you, I would not have supported that. And I told him on the phone. I said, you know, I've been working on this, and if we can't come to a decision, my easiest out for this is to vote no and just be done with it. But leadership means that you do something. You don't sit back and do nothing. And so I tried to create the best vessel that we could. That vessel that we have before us reduced the spending that we are spending in next year's budget. I'm not talking about this year's budget. I'm talking about next year's budget. The proposal that we had from the mayor was for $163 million, almost $164 million, which included $2.6 million of the vacancy of the rainy day fund. As I indicated during Committee of the Whole, I was here when David Hollister created the rainy day fund. It was supposed to be raining. It's not raining. So the idea of dipping into that just to balance the budget and not live within the means of what we're taking in made no sense. So with that, in making the reductions, the only thing that we added to that budget until the amendments were made here on the floor during Committee of the Whole was we added $300,000. That was the ARFA dollars, which I heard each one of you talk about, that you wanted to see go toward police, fire, and public service to make sure that we were doing some type of signing bonus. We cannot write signing bonuses in there. This is part of collective bargaining. You all know that. So these dollars were put into the salary lines for police, fire, and public service. If they do not come up with a collective bargaining, those dollars go back into the rainy day fund. We had a number of proposals that came on the floor, and I made it clear that because I had given my word, that I could not vote for those proposals. And I also said, there might be some of them that I even agree with, but my word was my bond. Again, we had to have something before us. And I stated this during Committee of the Whole. The city attorney made it abundantly clear that before we leave here at midnight, and I'm not saying we're going that long, but before we leave here at midnight, we have to have a budget passed. We are required by not only the charter, but state statute and the Uniform Budgeting Act to have this done. So with that, I would ask from the Vice President a motion on the amended budget that we have before us that came out of Committee of the Whole. And that included the items I just discussed, along with the items that were approved by this body during Committee of the Whole.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Just trying to take a little bit, because I know Patricia Spitzley's not with us right now, but
There she is.
I will make a motion to move the amended fiscal year 2023-2024 budget as written.
All right. With that, we will open the floor. Councilmember Fink.
Yeah, very quickly, I want to first acknowledge the work that you, President Wood and Ms. Linden did. We certainly appreciate that. When I talked to you on Thursday, what we talked about was the fact that you guys did fantastic work. But we also talked about the fact that for me, this would have to be in addition to. So I don't want anybody thinking that we had an agreement and that I somehow circumvented that. A number of the amendments that came forth tonight that I did support were the actual amendments that I was going to bring myself. Because, you know, in our discussions, and I certainly understand why you settled where you settled, particularly in the position of leadership, I totally understand. That being said, we went through, you know, almost a two-month process. And we had public hearings, and we asked tough questions, and then we took the information back to our constituencies. And folks at this dais, I think, do an incredible job interfacing with the folks that they represent. The people in Southwest Lansing were very clear that there were some priorities they wanted reflected in this budget. And I think the amendments that were made tonight demonstrate just that, or do just that, deliver on that. And so, again, this is not my position. This is a position for the Third Ward. I'm merely keeping the seat warm until the next individual steps in, and I take my marching orders from the Third Ward and the residents of the Third Ward. So I'm proud of my support for the amendments that I supported tonight, and I appreciate my colleagues for doing the work and bringing forth what I believe to be substantial amendments to this recommended budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that, and it's been no secret, one of the things that's always concerned me is that, you know, we have not, as an administration, taken cuts throughout the year. And you heard that during the budget when I asked each department, you know, have you, you know, had a cut? Your budget's been, you know, raised this percent. So that was no secret. One of the things that still concerns me, and I made no, and it's not a secret, is that the discussion was, we will have a structural deficit plan later this year. My concern was, why wouldn't you have that plan before we address the budget? And I'm always concerned about plans that happen after the budget because council, then our ability to look at that and provide comment is limited after that. So I'm still concerned about our structural deficit. You know, as we come up and as we come up for budget corrections and things that come, you know, that come after this, and there's always budget corrections after this, that's going to be a concern for me. And if I don't see or have a budget plan to address the structural deficit, I'm not quite, I cannot approve another budget. We just can't. So, you know, and then the other thing that we're talking about, I'm sorry, we cannot approve a budget amendment, any further amendments that come through. Sorry. The other thing was critically important to me were the warming centers. I mean, we've also, you know, chased that around and around and around the last few years, where people have been asking for warming centers when the, you know, during COVID, you know, the City Lansing Center would have been a perfect one, but we said, they said we couldn't use that. You know, we have the, we have the infrastructure to have four warming centers on cold blue days and cooling centers when it gets above a certain degree. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We have the structure in place. We just have to put the necessary resources and make the necessary commitments. And so I thank Councilmember Cost and Councilmember Jackson for bringing that forward with me, or you guys did the work, because we have to find the money for that. And we've heard that loud and clear, that we need that to help with our list in our City of Lansing. So I will be supporting the budget. I thank you, Councilmember Wood. You're right. You know, leadership is tough, you know? I know it more than, you know, anybody, because I told a 10-year-old girl she couldn't speak. So, you know, it's, so it's hard out here for a leader. But you stepped up and you did the right thing that you felt was the right thing to do, and I can only respect you for that. So thank you. I know it was, you know, you negotiated hard and true. I know you did. So, but I will be supporting this. If I don't see a structural deficit plan, I won't be supporting any amendments. I just can't. I just can't. Thank you.
I think the one thing I didn't add, which I need to make sure that is made clear, is we have asked, and this did come up during Committee of the Whole, that the Chair of Ways and Means is going to be looking at that. They will be meeting about this and be bringing monthly updates, just as the Public Safety Chair has been bringing updates on the red tag, they will be bringing monthly updates on the deficit plan and how to move forward. So that is something that's not going off the table. It is there. It is there and will definitely be worked on. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. First, I want to start by saying I'm not going to shake down some 10-year-old like Councilmember Spitzley. Okay, don't mess with you. I just, I want to say that I appreciate, you know, how much time, I know how much time you put into this budget. Is it perfect? Is it everything that we all wanted? It's not. So I appreciate how much time that you dedicated to this, and this being your last year here on city council. And I appreciate everyone on this council and the mayor's office, you know, for asking hard questions, getting answers, everyone that came before us answering our questions, but most importantly, the people that were sitting out here in the audience that were telling us, they were telling us what they wanted. And the people in the streets that I was talking to and sending me emails and text messages and Facebook messages, telling me this is what we need to do. I am incredibly proud that we were able to work out an amendment to get a warming center and a cooling center put together with Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Brian, I'm blanking on your last name, Jackson. I'm sorry.
We'll give name tags next time.
I have one. So anyways, I just want to say thank you, you know, but thank you to the people for being involved in this process. We need more people involved in this budget process. We need more voices. So with that, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Spatafor.
Sure. Thank you, President Wood. First, I want to apologize for missing last week's meetings. As you all know, I had my wisdom teeth out, and you probably don't think I need any more holes in my head, but here we are. So I want to thank you all for picking up the slack in my committees. I regret I wasn't able to offer amendments. I wasn't able to think about this until Friday, and I thought the deadline for amendments was Friday. So I apologize for not getting anything to you this weekend when we had the time. I do appreciate the work you've put into this budget, and I do hear your rationale for why it was produced this way, and I respect that. However, I know that we do not spend all the money. We know we don't spend all the money in personnel. Our internal auditor explained that the budget before us cuts the dollars we know we spend, not the dollars we lapse. That means we're going to see a 33% cut to parks and recreation operations, 37% cut to the courts, a 50% cut to the Treasury and Income Tax Department, 76% cut to the Human Resources Department looking to fill those vacant positions, 100% to the Assessing Department and the City Attorney each, and further cuts to departments that provide vital services to our residents. I do agree, we should be working hard to fill all of the positions in the city, and I think we should be looking at the entire budget to make it structurally balanced. The formula before us doesn't appear to do that, and in fact, leaves us worse off than before, and several departments with a fraction of dollars they need to fill those positions and serve our residents. I hear what you're saying about working on this continuing into the future through amendments, and I hope that that's true, and I look forward to working on that. I also hope we work together to craft our next set of a budget amendments to include a plan to deal with the structural deficit. I remain committed to doing that in the Ways and Means Committee. As you pointed out, I will make that my sole focus in that committee beyond approving applications and things like that to ensure that we have a plan in place to give to the mayor for our recommendations for how to address the structural deficit. And I thank you for your cooperation on that and your time this evening.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much, Carol President Wood, for the work that you have done, as well as the auditor and the rest of the team. I think that we're faced with a lot of, you know, difficult decisions, and I think that there was, you know, a balance of compromise to make because I think we cannot continue to spend above our means and think that we're going to have a result, you know, that is positive. We've talked about to Councilwoman Spitzley about the structural deficit and having a financial plan. We have not seen that. That's the administration's position to do so. And so I think it's very critical as we go forward as a city to have a plan in place so we can at least have a metric to know whether we're going in the right direction or a direction that's counterproductive. And so I know that we have faced a lot of difficult decisions. You've gotten everyone's input, including mine, everybody, the amendments, and listening, of course, to the constituents and the community, being very engaged, very appreciative for your voices being heard. And I think that's how this council has made decisions, by, you know, getting our stakeholder and who we work for, the public's input first and foremost, and then trying to come up with something that is practical, that can work, and that can move us forward as one city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Seeing none. At this time, we will need to divide the question. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to separate out the Department of Economic Development and Planning.
We have a motion to pull the Department of E D and P out. Are there others? Councilmember Jackson, are there others? You want to divide, you want to have that one pulled out?
Yes, 54A District Court budget as well as the fees.
Okay. And I would like, yes, Councilmembers Spatafor.
I'd like to pull out police, fire, and public service as one.
Pardon?
Police, fire, and public service as one.
Okay, as one group or?
Yes, as one group.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I would move HR, that HRCS be pulled out. So we will start with development and planning. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I request to be recused from the voting as I could have a potential conflict.
We have a motion to recuse Councilmember Spitzley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. The budget that we have before us is for economic development and planning. All those in favor of the budget say aye.
Aye.
We have 6-1 with one recusal. Our next is district court.
I would move to recuse myself from district court.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jackson to recuse himself. All those in favor of the recusal say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passes unanimously. We now have a motion to approve district court budg, budg, budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passes unanimously. Or, excuse me, passes 6-1. 6-1 with, you voted no, correct, Councilmember? That's, okay. So it's 6-1 with one recusal. Okay. Next is fees. Councilmember Jackson.
I would move to recuse myself from fees.
We have a motion on recusal from the fees. All those in favor of recusing, councilmember Jackson, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Now there's a motion for the fees. All those in favor of the fees say aye.
Aye.
And that passes 7 with one recusal. Next, we have HRCS. I would move to recuse myself from the HRCS budget.
We have a motion in place to recuse Councilwoman Wood from the HRCS budget. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes 7 with one recusal.
All right. Now we have the motion in front of us, the HRCS budget. All those in favor of the HRCS budget say aye.
Aye.
And that's, all those opposed? Okay. So that's 6-1 with one recusal.
I apologize, Councilmember Wood. Is it too late to separate the parks budget? Have we voted on it yet? Did I?
No, we haven't. So we could.
I would like to separate the parks budget, please. Thank you.
Okay, next we have police, fire, and public service budget. Did you want to speak to this or just be able to vote?
We can just vote.
Pardon? Okay. And just so that people understand, those budgets were, there were no reductions made to those budgets. So all those in favor of the police, fire, and public service budget say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, forget yours. All right, we forgot it. Okay, now we are to the remainder of the budget. All those in favor of the remainder of the budget say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, it passes 7-1. And that included the budget policies that are part of the budget as well. So that is it.
That's the budget. Okay, so we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If anyone here in the audience would like to address city council, we'll give you about another 30 seconds to jump up and fill out a form with grace in the back. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and.
Are there councilmember comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for referrals, councilmember, vice presidents.
Okay, I make a motion for the.
All right, have motion on the referrals. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
From the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
From the mayor, re-adopting the codified ordinances.
Committee of a whole.
And setting the hearing on that.
Committee of a whole. And just for a note, there are some errors in that ordinance. So before that is taken up with committee of a whole, those errors need to be corrected. I think there's a few of them that Sherry saw in the ordinance, so.
Okay, well, we have an ordinance review committee Wednesday, so we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you.
Item six, the annual training requirement for boards and commissions.
Committee of a whole.
Items seven and eight are on Z4 2023.
Development and planning.
Items nine and 10 are on Z5 2023.
Development and planning.
Items 11 and 12 on Z6 2023.
Development and planning.
And items 13 and 14 are on a noise special permit for CSO project on Green Lawn.
City operations.
Items 15, 16, and 17 are all sole source purchase requests. Ones, two are for the finance department, one for manor custodian for special services and creating a uniform chart of account, and the other is for MTG Consulting as a vendor for indirect labor cost allocation. And then the third is parks and recreation for most dependable fountains for three water fountain replacements.
And those are Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And then we have a grant application for the Michigan Department of Treasury grant for underfunded pensions.
That is a referral for Ways and Means and internal auditor, but Mr. Mayor, there, that referral, there is nothing in laser fish for that at this particular time. So I'm not sure what, other than a title, I'm referring. Yeah, that's part of, so that, it's not in the referral and it's not in laser fish. So I can do one of two things. I can pull it and have it on for the next.
I can tell you, the law department, a member contacted me, and there was a very tight turnaround time for the application, and they were supposed to get it in laser fish. That was the last I heard.
All right, so.
Follow up on that. I know there was a very tight turnaround.
All right, so if you could make sure, because we don't have that at this point. Okay.
And then finally, communications and petitions, a claim appeal for $360 in grass fees at 2306 East Michigan Avenue.
City operations and internal auditor.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Councilmember comments? Are there any councilmember comments? Seeing none.
Okay, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Yeah, I guess they left. I wanted to thank Desiree Kirkland and Jackson Mills. They did a lot of hard work on the budget, and I want to recognize that they worked, they did a lot of hard work. So I do appreciate everything that they've done and everyone, all of our department directors that worked hard to provide their information for the budget. Also, I wanted to raise that I would like to welcome comment from councilmembers and from the public, but we've started hearing from the public, on this no mo may concept. I have been told that it has been suggested that I can not enforce the ordinance, but I want to hear from councilmembers on their thoughts. Certainly, I welcome any ordinance changes that you all pass, but before I unilaterally decide not to enforce an ordinance, I guess I'd like to hear from councilmembers. I've heard from constituents on both sides. We've heard from folks that want it. We've heard from folks that don't want it. We get hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of grass complaints. So we have not waived it for May this year. Again, not something I generally do unless we can't, we don't have the residents to, unless we don't have the support staff. But again, I welcome anybody who would like to have that conversation or share with me your thoughts and opinions. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, but we're halfway through May and, okay. All right, thank you. Are, we are now.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Jody Washington followed by Erica Lynn.
I know you all are tired of hearing from me tonight because I'm tired of hearing from myself. But what I would do want to say first and foremost, thank you, Councilman Spatafor. I truly believe you understand the consequences of a structural deficit, and I am thankful that you are taking it seriously and that you will address this seriously in the Ways and Means Committee. And I know you will. And I'm not just saying that to stroke your ego, but I know you will. So thank you so much because I know everybody talks about the structural deficit, but I think you took it the most seriously, and I appreciate that. And another thing that's really concerning to me, so Thursday night, we had to make darn sure that we had something to pass today. This time period of when you hear from all of the departments must be shortened up. We can't have the last public hearing on Wednesday and present a budget on Monday because you know this budget isn't balanced. You know this is not the real budget. You put something out there that called budget, and then we'll make several amendments through the years. Shorten that time period up however you have to do it, and have some real time to work on a real budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn followed by Nicholas Sandy.
Hello again, Erica Lynn. I agree with Jody. I think the sense of urgency that's created by this timeline gives a lot of us heartburn. It's really difficult because along with a lot of other times where we've heard of things being passed, and we've heard you all make comments like, I didn't have enough time to really review this, we weren't given enough time to really think about this intentionally. You don't ever want to feel that way about the budget where it's like D-Day and it just has to be passed today, even if we feel like there are things that could have been thought about a little bit differently. So that timeline, I think that's worth, you know, talking about. I do want to kind of start off, I want to address something because this kept being talked about with personnel and with changes and broad personnel changes and cuts and things like that. I really want to point out, I think that there needs to be an understanding that that was never a call from anyone that I heard from the public. We were never calling for broad personnel changes or to not fill positions. That was never an ask. That was never on the table for us. That would not be good for Lansing, and that wouldn't be the solution. We were really specific and intentional with our asks based on what we heard and what we didn't hear from departmental presentations and questions answered and questions not answered. And that was very specific to the mayor's office budget on personnel and the HRCS personnel budget. So again, specifically the personnel. So, again, specifically the personnel, the people. There are 12 departments across this city with 12 department heads. I think that we are okay to rely on the expertise and the experience and the pay for those individuals to run those departments that run our city. I think a bloated mayor's office budget, having so much personnel and optional staff and things like that. When we are in times of a bloated bu, of a budget that we know is bloated, that we know is excessive, and we have to make cuts, the head of the snake, the person steering the ship, that should always be the first individual to say, "We're going to go down to a shoestring budget, and we're going to operate with the two people that the charter designates, and it's time to, you know, lessen the time that we have for other things, fun things." I always use the analogy, and this will go for this particular budget, administration budget, the personnel. As a parent, you constantly ask your kids when they want to go outside and play. "Did you get your business taken care of? Is your room clean? Is your homework done? Have you done everything that you were supposed to do before you asked me to go outside and play?" Well, before we go to lunch, before we do ribbon cuttings, before we attend community events and concerts in the park, maybe we spend more time in the office, getting things done and actually working, putting in sweat equity instead of bloating personnel budgets to have seven people supporting what should be a two-position budget. That's what we were looking for. I would never advocate for anything else other than that, other than looking creatively at what we can do to ensure that we are okay. Thank you to the work that was put in. I don't envy the situation that you're put in, Carol, to do this, but thank you for putting in the work to at least get it passed.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Sandy, followed by Mike Lynn.
So, I'm sure I don't need any introduction. And I'm sure you're probably getting as tired of hearing my voice, and sometimes I get tired of hearing my own voice sometimes. All I'm going to say about the budget is that while I do think that there are some, sometimes budgets need to be cut. There are budgets that actually need to be cut and those that don't. I mean, cutting spending for parks, like, you kidding me? That's really just not something that should be cut. And while I admire the work Ms. Wood did to at least salvage it, I'm not going to use the simile here that you might be thinking of because this is city TV, but you can guess what it is. And, because I feel like even when you're trying to fix something that's kind of broken beyond repair, it's really just, I don't, it only really helps slightly. And honestly, just, I feel like there are budgets that definitely should have been cut but just weren't, like the fact that police is still overspent. And now I've just found out that the mayor's office is also overspend quite a lot. So, those are two things that need to have severe limits on their spending. And also, a lot of these austerity measures have many of consequences, which again, won't discuss because it's personal. So, while I'm glad something was passed, I still think it was kind of half-baked and just kind of rushed into completion. It just feels like something like went wrong when something was going on. And this honestly is my kind of opinion on this current administration. A lot of things just went wrong with this administration when it could have gone right considering their previous record and previous positions. That's all I really want to say, and I will yield the last minute of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Mike Lynn.
Mike Lynn, real quick, I'm going to run down this, and I'm actually stick to my notes. Shelby Freire was brought in here back in 2018 to look at this budget, to really figure out where we were overspending at because we had depleted at that point in time a portion of our rainy day fund. But then we got to a point where we weren't even going to be able to handle anymore. Shelby Freire is now Deputy Mayor. The mayor's staff, and when we talk about that and why that needs to change, I think he really does need all that staff. So, let me just be honest. Because I never really hear any substantial anything coming from this guy other than like the next dancing thing or the next celebration or the next whatever it is. Like, almost like, almost like a nonprofit like program director more than like a mayor or somebody who's actually supposed to be knowing this stuff. So, really, Carol, I apologize because it's not your fault. It's almost like when a used car salesman upsells a car for like $10,000 where really they were trying to get five grand out of it. So, you might fall in line because you're just trying to do a good thing at $7,500, and then they make $2,500 more on the car, and really, the car's only worth $5,000. So, I think that it's not your fault. It's not any of you guys' fault because he really brought you a sham budget. I mean, the budget had no, like, it had no intentions on being legit whatsoever. The conversations surrounding, you know, getting rid of boots in the ground. I really hate you keep saying that narrative, Carol, because we talked about this for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. Up here, we don't want to get rid of any boots in the ground. Definitely not getting rid of boots in the ground. We need to fill those positions. You need to get rid of the up top positions that aren't doing anything for their money. Because we didn't hear from boots in the ground. Boots in the ground are not coming here and sit through these tables, and you ask them what their job description is. The uphead people came in here and you asked them what their job descriptions were, and they told you what their job descriptions were. And then you said, "Well, we're not getting that out of it." Right? The man came to the last Cow meeting and said, "You know, in East Lansing, you might pay all this money and all these taxes, but you see it. You're walking down the road and you're not stubbing your toe on a pothole. You see where your money's going. Our violence isn't like it is in Lansing. So, when we're spending this type of money, 200 and some odd million dollars or whatever, if we're spending that type of money, we should be, we should still not, we should not be talking about sidewalks. We should not be talking about warming centers. We shouldn't be talking about any. We should live in a city of gold, literally. A city of gold for that amount of money that we're spending." So, when we're talking about these budget cuts, what I would have proposed, if I had have been sitting up there, is a 10% cut across the board, except for Police, Fire, and City, or City Operations, which is essentials, right? A 10% cut. Get rid of the mayor's office and all of his budget to help him control the 12 departments and knock it down to what the charter asks for. Maybe give him an assistant, right, because he needs somebody to schedule all the ribbon cuttings that he goes to. Outside of that, anything nonessential or miscellaneous and any of that stuff, get rid of it. This is what you do when you're in a budget crisis. When you're not meeting the budget, when I'm at home and my light bill comes back at $5,000 or whatever the case it comes back to, I don't just get to say, "I'm going to give you $5,000 if I can't find it in my bank account." So, why are you guys any different? Why is the city any different? Again, I appreciate what you guys have done. I think we did get some nice stuff. I appreciate that. But we can't just keep saying this is what we've always done. So, let's do something better next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay, we are adjourned, and it's not midnight. Yeah, I know.
I think that I would have become a father. I did not think that I was going to get married. You know, I had thought that I had seen this lifestyle from TV and movies of like what gay people are supposed to be like, and I thought, "That must be me. I guess I'll go to New York City because that's what gay people do."
That's right after the break. We'll be back in just a moment. You're with State Side on Michigan Radio at 91.7 in Ann Arbor in Detroit, 91.1 in Flint, 91.3 in Port Huron, 89.7 in Lansing, and 104.1...